We should do something for Roland and Mike, the other Mike that's not with us anymore. I already threw away the.
Good evening and welcome to the October 20th zoning board meeting tonight. And so Scott, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. In attendance, Councilor Eric Hoffman, Richard Boddy, Jane LaRoche, Chair Marcia Hayward, Assistant Planner Tyler Carmichael, myself Scott Pelchett, I'll be taking minutes. Also in attendance, Staff Member Robert Moore.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, I want everyone in the audience to know that we do not have a full board tonight. We have four members here and you would need three affirmative votes in order to have anything pass. So if you would like to wish to come back at another time when we have a full board, you are welcome to do that. So I need to make you aware of that. I also need to make you aware, if you are a White Oaks Road applicant, Mr. Boddy here lives on White Oaks Road and he will recuse himself. Therefore, there will only be Eric, Jane, and myself voting. So again, something for you to consider before you go forward. And with that said, would somebody make a motion to accept the minutes from our September meeting?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
Sorry.
Thank you, Eric. All in favor? Okay, the minutes have been accepted. So our very first applicant this evening is from 11 Lewis Street. Do I have 11 Lewis Street being represented this evening? No?
Yeah.
Okay, so 11 Lewis Street is not here.
Oh, I just put them in the corner.
Are they? Oh, okay. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Please come to the podium. Introduce yourselves, please.
My name is Ola Boddy.
My name is wife Brittany Ola Boddy.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Ola Boddy, you are here because you would like to revoke the city's decision, which was, you had a permit for a Airbnb at 11 Lewis Street and the city has revoked that permit, is my understanding. And you are here to ask the zoning board to rescind the city's decision. Am I correct on that? That's why you're here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So with that being said, I would like to take a look at each violation that the city wrote you about. I'd like to take each one in order and have you respond as to why that decision should not be upheld. The first one was on July the 31st, you received a letter from the City of Laconia saying that you were in violation of advertising because you were given a permit for six guests and you were advertising for 10. So would you address that one first, please?
That wasn't the first violation. The vast violation was about a complaint for the police department. That should be the first one, please.
Okay, I have the letters in front of me. You're corrected. It is about the July 4th and 5th. I take that back. July 28th is about, they had two responses from the Laconia Police Department at your residence at 11 Lewis Street complaining about fireworks, debris of fireworks on people's lawn, harassment of the neighbors. So do you want to address that?
So July 4th, there was, the fireworks was legal because when the police department came, there was no citation. And we circled back to the police department to see if there was a citation because our family members were in the building and everybody in the community was doing the fireworks. So it was in my compound, not outside other people's compound.
But there was a debris apparently that fell into the neighbors' yards.
But there were also other neighbors doing fireworks.
Okay.
So it was more of an attack on our property because we are a short-term rental. And when I spoke to Scott about the violation, I had asked, does it have to be a legitimate police report? Like, does there have to be a crime committed or a legitimate police call on our home? And he basically said, yes, it has to be, like, they can't just make stuff up. They can't just call the police because they're not happy with what's going on. So when I called the Laconia Police Department and they said there was no record of a call even being made.
One of the neighbors said that they called on the 4th and another letter I have here says that the police actually did come the next day.
They did come because, again, it was my sister-in-law that was there, or my ex-sister-in-law. So she did call and say that they did show up and they talked about it. The police officer said that technically it's legal, but where they were doing it, to not do it because they were gonna have problems with the neighbors.
Was there any comment by the police for some of the drunken disorderlyness that went on?
Negative.
Hey Marcia, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Procedure-wise, what is it that we're doing here? I mean, we're not a court of law. Well, we are a court, we are a legal, we are a legal court for sure. What is it that we're doing here? Are we simply rehearsing to see that what we did was appropriate and now we're there? Or is there some, tell, inform us as to what we're doing here tonight with these folks?
Yep. So state law gives all residents basically a relief valve for city officials that make decisions. Director Mora made a decision to revoke the permit based off of the violations. The applicants disagree with that revocation. They are now appealing to this board through, in accordance with state law, and asking you to rescind his decision to revoke the permit.
Okay. So it's listed as this Article 7, 235, 41, and 6 about that if there are four complaints, so that, so there have been at least four complaints.
Four letters, yeah.
Correct. Four complaints.
Yeah.
And I don't see that as necessarily being, seeing it being a police report. There were four complaints and we have them from, four or more complaints from residents. So in the zoning rules, as we have them there, if there are four, director made a decision to revoke the permit. And so we are here tonight, they are saying, hey, look, we think that this was done in error. Is that really simply what we're doing here?
Correct. And I would just say, probably to simplify the proceedings, if you just want us to speak as to why you think he made that decision in error and just give your point of view and then we'll have Director Mora come up and give why he made the decision to revoke. Then we have to open it up to a public hearing and then you all will deliberate and make your decision.
Okay, then let's keep it simple like that. Okay.
Okay. So you've addressed that one. The second one was the owner, must be an owner occupied. And apparently, the residence is listed as Methuen, Mass. and not Lewis Street, so please address that one.
So my residence was listed as Methuen, Mass. on my Facebook. I don't live in Methuen, Mass. That's just where I grew up and I've never changed it. That's basically the explanation. It was just kind of a hunt for something that they can complain about.
Okay.
And I am not the homeowner, so whether my Facebook says Methuen or...
Who is the owner?
My husband is.
Okay.
But the complaint was for my address or my residence being Methuen.
Because that's what it showed on the Airbnb site when you advertised.
On my, no, on my Facebook.
Okay, on your Facebook page. And the third one is, again, the advertising for 10 guests when you're supposed to have six.
Yes. That is the only violation that I can agree with. We did have it on VRBO, we had switched to a property management company and they listed it for 10. So Scott emailed me, we switched it to six and that was...
Okay. Any other comments you want to make about this?
No.
Just meant, right.
No, I mean...
But maybe you would address then questions from the board. Jane, you have some questions?
On the city tax records, we show an address of 9 Blaisdell Street in Haverhill.
That's my primary address.
And where is your driver's license?
Methuen, Haverhill, Massachusetts.
And where do you vote?
I don't vote.
Are you not a registered voter?
No.
No, are you?
No.
No.
But she's saying she's not the owner of the property, that her husband is.
You're the owner of the property, so you have a Massachusetts driver's license?
I didn't change it because I'm a traveler nurse and I drive everywhere. I do contracts, so I follow my job.
So he travels a lot, but his primary address is listed as 11 Lewis Street. And when we were putting in the paperwork for that, we did ask, does he have to switch his license? If that's the case, he can. We were told no, as long as we have the documents, proof of address and a registered vehicle, which we do. So we thought we were...
Well, the vehicle is registered here?
We do have a vehicle registered here, yes.
Because the city tax records has your legal address as Haverhill.
My legal address.
No, and when I look and it's both your names are on it, it says 9 Blaisdell Street, Haverhill.
Not just Brittany.
Right, and it's both their names.
Both their names, okay.
On the tax record.
Okay. Does somebody else on the board have a question? Eric?
Do you live in the, in the house 150 or more days a year?
In Laconia?
Yes.
Technically, it's his primary address, so I go back and forth.
But do you stay there more than 150 days a year?
Yes. So from November to May, we're there.
When I'm not working?
Right.
Okay.
Richard?
I don't.
No questions? I'm gonna ask you to have a seat and then we, we'll open it up to the public to make comments as well. And then you can rebut anything that anybody says, so...
Were those the, he said there were four violations. We went over three.
No, I had four letters. I had four letters and there were three violations, is what I could glean. Okay, so if you want to have a seat for a minute, please?
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you want Mr. Mora to come up first, or?
I think that's up to you, but I think that it would be given an opportunity to speak before it opens up to public hearing.
Okay, so thank you. We'll have Mr. Mora, who is our planning director, explain why he revoked their permit.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, zoning board. The application before the zoning board of adjustment is an appeal from the Director of Planning and Community Development's August 18th, 2025 decision to revoke the short-term lodging permit for 11 Lewis Street. As described fully below, the director's decision was reasonable, supported by evidence and legally correct, and thus should be upheld. Timeline of events. On September 16th, 24, the owner submitted a special exception to the zoning board of adjustment in consideration of approving the use of short-term lodging at the property. In review of the special exception criteria, the ZBA denied the application following a properly noticed public hearing at its September 16th, 2024 meeting. On October 3rd, 2024, the owner applied for a short-term lodging permit and provided the documentation required by the Laconia zoning ordinance as proof of residence. After reviewing the application and documentation provided, I issued the permit on October 25th, 24. On November 7th, 24, I approved the issuance of the first violation letter in response to a complaint regarding the advertised occupancy allowed at the property in accordance with the ordinance. The permit was approved for a maximum occupancy of six people while the advertisement claimed occupancy of 10 was permitted. The owner did not appeal my decision within 30 days as designated by the ZBA rules and procedures. Thus, that violation stands. On July 8th, I received several complaints regarding nuisances caused by excessive noise, debris caused by festivals, festivities, sorry, held at the property on July 4th and July 5th. The complaints informed me, the complaints informed me that they notified the Laconia Police Department. I do not have the authority to issue a violation for the noise of property maintenance in accordance with city code. Thus, I could not send a violation letter for that complaint. However, the complaints were added to the file to demonstrate the impact of the use of the property regarding the surrounding butters. On July 28th, I approved the issuance of a second violation letter in response to a complaint regarding the advertised occupancy allowed at the property. As advertised, it was also advertised that the primary residence of the property owner was Massachusetts. As stated previously, the maximum occupancy approved for the property was six and the advertised occupancy remained unchanged at 10 people. Additionally, the permit was approved based on the property being primary residence of the owner. The advertisement listed the owner's primary residence as Methuen, Massachusetts. The owner did not appeal my decision within 30 days. Again, in accordance with the ZBA rules and procedures, thus that violation stands. On July 31st, I issued the third violation letter in response to a complaint regarding the advertised occupancy allowed at the property. As previously stated, the maximum occupancy approved for the property was six and the advertised maximum occupancy remained unchanged at 10. The owner did not appeal my decision within 30 days as designated by the ZBA rules and procedures. Thus, that violation still stands. On August 18th, I issued a fourth violation letter and revocation in response to a complaint regarding the advertised occupancy allowed at the property and primary residence of the owner. The occupancy and the primary residence listed in the advertisement remained unchanged despite the previous violation notifications. The owner did not appeal my decision to issue a violation letter within 30 days. On September 9th, the owner submitted an appeal of my decision to revoke the permit in accordance with RSA 676-5. However, since the owner never appealed any of the violations and the violations stand and the ZBA can only rule this evening on the decision to revoke the permit. Conclusion, the owner never submitted an application to the ZBA to appeal any of my decisions previous to issue each violation letter, nor has the owner remedied any of the violations identified by myself. Therefore, all violations stand and any testimony made by the owner regarding my decision to issue, to issue previous violation letters should not be considered by the ZBA. Since I issued the revocation following three separate violations in accordance with this ordinance, I respect her request that you uphold my decision to revoke the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mora.
You're welcome. And I'd also like to highlight, I'll read it out of the zoning ordinance if you'd like. It is Section 235, 41m. It is M...M6. Approvals may be revoked for failure to comply with this chapter or any other conditions of approval imposed as part of the approval. In general, the first violation of a requirement will result in a written, in a warning, the second in a civil penalty of 275 for each day of the violation, and the third in a revocation of the appeal. If a revocation occurs, the owner may not apply for reinstatement for a period of one year. I gave the applicant more than three opportunities. They did not appeal any of those. And as far as residency is concerned, he still had three violation letters for occupancy limits.
Thank you.
So all four of the violations were about the same as the occupancy issue?
Correct.
So none of these other things are really pertinent to this as far as fireworks or residency or...
Or complaints from neighbors? Isn't something to be considered?
You could absolutely consider them. However, the fact of the matter is, they were in violation of their permit for the occupancy on each of the occasions and they're only allowed three violations. They have four. The ordinance is very clear, after three, they can be revoked, which I did.
I thought we had something in there about behavior.
Yeah, I had a question. I lost my train of thought for a second. A lot of people are complaining, isn't it their responsibility to manage the property and manage the people that are renting it from them?
They are, that is their responsibility.
Yes, and so they have not been doing that.
So...
So we should take those complaints into consideration?
You can absolutely take those complaints into, but the fact of the matter is, we should be revoking it based off of the violation letters.
Yeah, okay.
So initially, they had applied for a special exception, which they were denied, but then they met the requirements without the special exception. What did they apply for the special exception for?
So they needed the special exception because they were not owner occupied. They then brought in a vehicle registration and a utility bill. After each of the consecutive violation letters were sent, they did not provide any proof that they still met that requirement, which they could have done to remove that violation, yet they did not submit any documentation to back up that.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public and if anyone would like, from the public, would like to comment on this, please come forward and I will give Mr. and Mrs. Ola Boddy an opportunity to rebut. Hi!
Hi, thank you, I'm Carol Varney. I live at 58 Edgewater Ave. I'm one of the nine of butters to this property. It's unusual to have a small city lot with nine of butters, but, so we have one in, on Lewis Street. So I didn't come prepared really to talk about the fireworks because I was the complainant on that. I was the one that complained. My house is probably, I have 150-year-old hay barn attached to my house and it is probably about, I would say it was probably about 30 feet away from where they were shooting off these fireworks. The fire, it was not about the noise and it was not about the litter on the, and I wish I had brought them. I've showed them to Councilman Cheney, the fireworks remnants, and when I first showed them, everybody, even the fire department thought I was bringing them cookies because these remnants, fire department, fire chief said they're called cakes and they have like cement, there's cement things on the bottom, I guess that hold them up and they go really high. And these are what, this is what was raining down on my deck as I was out there trying to put things away on the night of July 5th. And the whole neighborhood was upset about this. Calls were made to the police department and the police department at first thought it was a noise complaint and I had to say to them, no, this is not about noise. I know about the noise ordinance. This is about safety. We're like in a war zone down here with all of this raining down. And so the police, so I said, I, you know, I demand to have a police officer come down here and they came down and I said, if you come around Lewis Street, you will see it, I mean, if you come on from North Main down to Lewis Street, as soon as the cruiser did, the stuff was raining down. They went immediately into the driveway of that property. And maybe the reason why the property owner didn't find a report of anything, the call for service is under my name at my address, but it's about 11, and I forgot to bring a copy of the call for service, but, because I didn't think we'd be talking about this. But anyways, the, there was one man that was highly intoxicated on the property. I've been in law enforcement. I've heard the F-word used many times. I've never heard it used as many times as I was hearing it used that night with no other words and not making any sense. And as soon as, he was, he was directing that to my 70-plus-year-old husband who was but trying to, you know, was there to keep an eye on our property. And when I came up on the scene, then he started using the C-word. And the other people that were with them had to hold him back because he was trying to come over the stone wall onto our property at my husband. As it was, he was knocking rocks off of our, you know, antique stone wall that's out there. And the fire, and the police department told him they had to shut the fireworks down because it was unsafe location. And so then when the police department, police officer came over and talked to me, I said, well, what about, you know, this disorderly conduct and threatening and all this stuff? He said, don't worry, he's so drunk, he's gonna probably be passed out in about five minutes. So that's the real story, if you want to hear it. And I'm sure there's, we have, many of the nine of butters are here tonight and I'm sure they would be glad to tell you more about that. But let me tell you about what I came to talk about. And in reading the owner's letter to the city, I think the owner is confusing ownership with occupancy and residency. Yes, he's the owner of record, we all agree to that, and he may feel that he can call it his primary residence because he's registered a car here. I'm sorry, but we all know as New Hampshire people, a lot of people own property in New Hampshire, but are from Massachusetts, will register their car in New Hampshire. It's tax advantageous, it's not even not legal, but we know it's common practice. So I don't really think that that is a good red evidence of him being a primary resident. But the ordinance, going back to the ordinance, short-term lodging is allowed in an owner-occupied residence only if the owner resides on the property for no less than 150 days. The ordinance further defines reside as dwell permanently or continuously or occupy a place in one's legal domicile. There are, we are very close knit neighborhood, nine of butters and then there's a lot of other people very close around. Most of us are retired. There's a few that have small children, so we're all home most of the time. We're all there and we kind of, we kind of practice neighborhood watch. We keep an eye out for things. We, you know, look for lost cats. We put mail in when people are away. We let people know if there's a bear coming through the neighborhood. We water flowers for people that are gone. It's just the type of neighborhood that we are. We all know each other. We might not know each other's names, but we know who lives in our neighborhood. And I can bet that the vast majority, and you can ask many of them here, if this is not the first time that they've seen Mr. Ola Boddy. He has not been there. She has been there to just clean in between rentals. We see her, you know, she'll be there to clean and leave. So the only people that I've seen on this property have been the short-term rental guests, mostly on weekends. Otherwise, the property is empty. Even the mail lady told me just recently, quote, "They never pick up their mail." So, in all due respect, this property is owner occupied. And if that's not true, then I would like to hear what dates he has stayed overnight since owning this property. And additionally, a search of both Airbnb and Verbo shows that with the exception of the coming weekend and two weekends in November, this property is being advertised as available every day through the remainder of this year and well into 2026. There's nothing that blocks it out that would indicate that it's not available, i.e., the owner would be staying there. Because this is not a two-family, this is, you know, it's just one house. So again, my question would be, he has not lived there yet. When will the property owner be residing there to fulfill the 150 days, minimum 150 days of owner occupancy? Clearly, he is residing somewhere else. Might that be Haverhill? And he's currently an absentee owner of 11 Lewis Street. Before I close, I want to point out a few other disturbing practices that I've seen at this property. We've talked about it. He's supposed to have a minimum of six, no more than six people and a maximum of no more than four cars. If you look at a list that one of the butters sent in, you will see that that is commonly ignored and there's often times when there's more than, well more than six people and more than four cars. So he clearly is, they're clearly not enforcing that. What bothers me mostly a lot too is, since he's gotten this revocation, you know, I've never been through this, had to deal with any of this. I don't know how revocations work in the city. But I would think that if your permit gets reversed, revoked, you stop doing what you were supposed to be permitted to do. That's not been the case here. Since the permit has been revoked, the property has been continuously rented. It's business as usual. So you combine that with the fact that he's, that, you know, letting whoever and how many ever stay at the property. To me, it appears to me that this property owner is demonstrating a blatant disregard for our city ordinances and laws. The city did the right thing by revoking this permit and I respectfully request that you continue to do the right thing by not reinstating it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Varney. Is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak on this issue? Mayor?
Good evening.
Oh, that was a little too early, wasn't it? Sorry.
I'm sorry?
I won't say it. Councilman Cheney, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Cheney. I'm councillor for Ward 1, which Lewis Street is a part of. Back, excuse me, shortly after July 4th, I was asked to come to one of the resident's house. I thought I was meeting with a woman I had known for years because she worked for me. I walked into a house with about 20 people who were concerned about what was going on there. I can tell you, I've seen the call for service. It does exist. I have now made a regular part of my trips downtown to swing in Lewis Street, around Edgewater Ave and back out onto North Main routinely. And on the weekends, it's very frequently got cars there, but most of the time during the week, there's nobody there. So for them to suggest that anybody routinely lives there 150 days, I think is impossible for them to document at this point. And I think Mr. Mora, who I'm sure all of you know, is more than fair. I think his decision to revoke their permit is totally appropriate and I ask you to back his decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else, please? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hugh Smith. I'm at 44 Edgewater Ave. My first name is H-U-G-H, Hugh. I've had that home since I think 81 or 82. These are all single-family owner-occupied residences and the bulk of the majority are elderly people, such as myself with the gray hair. And it's a very quiet neighborhood. The traffic we have is people walking their dog in front of the house, somebody with a stroller taking a walk with a child, a jogger, okay? We don't have, or a car once in a while going by. Years ago, we had a cat. The cat used to sleep in the road because that's how minimal traffic there was. Walk out in the road. I, I deal with people all day long. And, and when there's a hesitation in an answer, somebody's trying to think of an excuse. And one lie determines another lie. I'm not accusing this gentleman of not telling the truth, but I got the feeling sitting here that it's a question of who owns the property. He owns it, she owns it, they both own it. Sounds like he owns it. Yet she's answering the questions. Does he have a driver's license in the state of New Hampshire, registered to 11 Lewis? Yes or no? That answer was not, that question was not answered. It was ignored. And maybe I'm wrong, but I honestly believe that in the state of New Hampshire, if you move, you have a certain number of days to change your driver's license address. And if you don't and you get pulled over and you have a false address because you didn't change it, there's a fine for that. So taking and registering a utility bill or the trick of, I'm going to register a car, okay? We know what's behind that. That doesn't prove residence. Show me your driver's license. Show me a tax return. Show me somebody that's coming and going every single day. Okay? I honestly believe that this is a game where somebody came from out of state, bought a home, and it's a very unique property. If you look at the streets, there's Lewis Street, there's Edgewater Ave, there's Bussel Street. This is halfway down Lewis Street on the right-hand side, tucked in behind a bunch of us. And I was there the 4th of July watching the fireworks go off. And I've been there for 40, 45 years. In the past, neighbors would shoot fireworks off towards the water. Somebody across the lake would be shooting a mop up over the lake. This is a wooded backyard in the middle of everybody else. Talk about a fire hazard. And if it did go up in flames, I have, as my next-door neighbor, just had heart surgery. You would never get a firetruck or an ambulance in any of those roads with cars parked. We have to rope off in front of our houses so people don't go down on the dock. It's happened. They drop off the side of the road into the edge of the water, over the rocks. So I honestly believe that the city of Laconia is 110% correct in what you've done. I agree 100% with what Carol has said. She voiced that very wisely and it's all fact. And those fireworks going off, I didn't call and complain because I knew enough of the other neighbors were calling. Okay? For the town to even, to the city of Laconia to even think that they made a mistake is absurd. You guys are 110% right. You've done everything you're supposed to do. And it's all documented fact. The hesitation of the driver's licenses, hesitation of who lives there, the little tap dance we get up here is not fact. Somebody from Massachusetts or wherever came up, bought a home and expensively grabbed it, decided they're going to turn into a Airbnb. This is not an Airbnb neighborhood. It wasn't before they came. It isn't going to be afterwards. And if somebody decide, he has rights by all means. If the man was 63 and going to retire at 65 and bought a home to rent for two years and then retire and move into it, God bless him. But to come up and deceive everybody and then just keep deceiving and deceiving and deceiving, it isn't right. And I believe that the city of Laconia should back up their decision and stop any permit at all for an Airbnb. Because we're going to be here a year from now wasting your time again. It's going to be the same thing again. After the year goes by, we're going to be back with some sort of documentation, but people coming and going. I mean, I grew up in Hampton Beach. We used to rent weekly houses, cottages. We had a couple of cottages. And yes, the wife cleans. Or the mom cleans. So that's common to come in and out. That's normal. But does somebody sleep there every night? You see him go to work in the morning? You see him come back at night? No. So I thank you for your time tonight. And with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else, please, from the public? If there are none, I will invite Mr. and Mrs. Olubud to come back and rebut any comments that the public made.
Hello. So the number one thing I wanted to say about the violations and appealing each violation, I did not know that that was an option. After the first one, I contacted Scott because at the bottom of the violation, it says to contact him. I asked him, what is the process for this? This is just a letter letting you know that you have a complaint towards your property, blah, 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 blah. Nothing that you need to do. You have the right documentation, this, this, and that. If I knew that I could appeal each violation, it would have been different. We would have appealed them. Because the only violation that I feel is legitimate is the occupancy number, which again, was changed when Scott reached out to me. So I don't know why he said the violation was sent out and then still not changed, because it was. Another thing is, you know, they say that this is a residential area and all of this stuff. I could show you who rents my house. It is all families, all people with children. The only people that go there that are not families is my family. My cousins have rented in the past or stayed in the past. They don't even pay me. But other than that, everybody on Airbnb, I only think I've had one rental from VRBO, they're all families with little children and they love the house because of where it is. They don't want to be near Wears Beach where there's parties and buses and crazy things and motorcycles. They want to be downtown. They want to be down the street from the park where they can take the kids and down the street from Opechii Lake where they can go and relax with their children. So the complaints of having big parties, that's also not true. I can show you how many people rent. I just feel like their, their complaints, it's been an attack from the beginning. They saw trucks in my driveway when we were remodeling that had short-term rental on it. It was my cousin's company. And we had this listing up for a week before they sent us a complaint about having a short-term rental there.
Could that have been the time when you came before this board, asked for a short-term rental and it wasn't going to be owner-occupied?
No.
And you were denied? And it's my understanding you still rented it anyway. Is that the-
No. So we didn't know we needed a, what's it called?
Permit.
A permit. So we had listed it and within a week, Scott had been notified that it was listed. They were waiting for our property to be listed to complain about it. So what I'm just trying to say is it's, it's been a personal attack and it's been constant harassment that they say that this guy that was there was belligerent and attacking because her husband was standing at that rock wall, just staring at them for a long period of time. And that's why he got agitated, because there were children there. He didn't appreciate being watched like a criminal. The police came, they stopped the fireworks. That should have been it. They should have gone about their business and gone back into their home and they didn't. They stood there and they harassed my, my, my guests. That was the problem. To the point where he had said that he did call the police back just to report the harassment. Again, I reached out to the police department. They said they had no record of any incident there. So what actually happened, I don't, I have no idea. I wasn't there.
It is not uncommon for the police to respond to a situation and not document it. We have had this before with other Airbnbs. They have been called in and we have asked to see if there was a police report and there wasn't. But we do know that the police went there.
Right.
So just because there wasn't a report filed that you were looking for, does not mean that there wasn't-
There wasn't any issue.
There was an altercation with the police. But anyway, any other final comments or questions that the board has? Any last words that you want to say?
The, the father, they said they don't, they haven't seen me. I've been there countless times, but I'm very quiet. You're not going to see me if you don't look for me. I'm very, very quiet. I've slept there many times. But I'm not going to start screaming, hey, I'm here, I'm living, I'm, you know.
Well, your car, your car has to be in the yard.
Yeah. My wife drives me all the time. I don't really drive because I walk a lot. And even coming over here, I've been walking since 6 o'clock in the morning. I got 5 o'clock and that's when we came in. Right. So she drives me. I only drive to walk if I have to.
Okay.
And that's why she manages the business.
All right. Okay. Thank you. I will close this portion of the public meeting and it will now become just a discussion amongst the board and we will not take any more comments from the audience. The discussion will be confined to here. So please have a seat. Thank you. Comments?
Well, this has nothing, this has nothing to do with any of the complaints relative to the behavior. This has to do with four, four violations that were, that are better on. And what Rob did was exactly the same.
Yeah. The fact that they never responded to any of Rob's letters and they have 30 days and they never responded or followed up on them, that, it shows me that they continue to not care about what's going on there.
Well, I, I would give a little bit of grace to say to them that maybe they don't know. And that's fine.
Well, they didn't read the letter.
No, no, that's, I'm saying, well, we do that. We do that sometimes. All I'm saying, regardless of the reasons for that, we have a, the, the decision was made. I, the decision, in my view, is 100%. It'll be revoked for a year and a year and they can come back if they want.
Eric?
Well, according to this, I mean, all of these letters were about the occupancy issue in which they had 10 months and four letters to figure out how to change that. The fact that they didn't after two, three, four letters, I think says a lot. And the fact that it was still listed after their permit was revoked, I think, shows a real disrespect for the ordinance in the first place.
I, I will say legally for that, though, when an appeal is filed, it stays the director's decision. So, yeah.
Okay, fair point.
Would somebody like to make a motion then, please?
I make a motion that we, I think the best way to say this is that we affirm that the decision, the director's decision was correct based on the finding of fact here tonight.
On application number?
Well, I'm going to, this is a new, this is a new thing for us to get.
We've never done this before, right?
So, um, the language I would use would be, or recommend that you use would be, I move to deny application ZB 2026-012 and uphold the director's decision.
Okay. I make a motion that we deny application ZB 2026-012 for 11 Lewis Lane and uphold the director's decision.
Second, thank you, Jane. And discussion, all in favor?
Of declining.
Of declining and supporting Mr. Moore's decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
More than affirmative.
Okay. All right. Next is 191 Court Street, please.
Do you want to let it settle or?
You can't get car insurance in New Hampshire if you have a Massachusetts license plate.
A weather.
I mean, they're talking out both sides of their mouth.
Okay, so both of them, yeah. The variance and the specialist exception. Got it.
You could just make an announcement.
I will do that. Yeah. One moment before I take you up, an announcement that application for, is it 321 White Oaks Road? Let me check my, no, 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 no. They're, they are withdrawing.
Nope, they're continuing.
I'm sorry. They are continuing, they're withdrawing tonight, continuing next time. 371 White Oaks Road has a variance and a special exception and they are going to hold off until we have a full board. Okay. Now, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I am looking at Caitlin?
Yes. Caitlin Maney, Asset Management Director for Lakes Region Community Developers.
Hi Caitlin. How can we help you tonight?
So Lakes Region Community Developers is respectfully requesting a variance to allow a boundary line adjustment between two existing properties that we own, 191 and 193 Court Street. For those of you who are familiar with the old Walters Market, that's our office, currently our office. And when we bought the property, it came with the house next door. So the proposed adjustment will create two distinct lots, one commercial and one single-family residential. So we will maintain their current use. This change will just simply clarify and formalize the existing conditions. This adjustment will help ensure that each property's use and ownership are clearly defined for future maintenance and future options. The proposed boundary adjustment improves how each structure relates to its lot and no new encroachments or construction is proposed. This will just formalize the existing conditions again, provide clarity in ownership and use. It doesn't create any overcrowding, increase traffic, negatively impact the public, and it doesn't involve any new construction. The boundary adjustment, again, simply formalizes what's already in place. Two well-established properties that will continue to operate as they do today with clearer and more appropriate lot lines. So as you can see, we've had the lot surveyed. On the second page, it's kind of hard to see, it's faded, but the highlight is the new proposed boundary. And you can just see that the buildings are very close so they don't meet the required setback. So that's why we're asking for the variance.
So Caitlin, I'm, I'm trying to look at the new proposal, but-
It is tough.
It's easier for me to look at this one.
Yep.
And, and I noticed that your boundary line does go through your, your property. So I'm just curious if your new lot line is going to follow the zigzagging motion of-
Correct.
Of the outline of your building.
Yeah. So when we bought the property, that addition, that was an addition that was done before we bought the property, that bump out, which does fall in the line. So yes, the new proposed line would sort of zigzag between those two buildings. Correct.
Questions from the board?
It looks pretty clear.
It looks pretty clear to me too. So Caitlin, if you would have a seat for a minute, I'll just open it up to the public to see if anybody would like to address this particular request at 191 Court Street. Anyone from the public? Okay. If there are no questions from the public and you have no questions for Caitlin, can I close? Are we set to close the public? I will close the public portion of the meeting and open it up to board discussion.
So the entire community is filled with pre-existing non-conforming-
Yep.
And the way that the property has been used. Director Tyler?
Sorry, I was closing.
Yes. Kind of curious, why is there a right-of-way between the two, the two side buildings?
Um, you know, I'm not entirely sure why there is a right-of-way there. It could be that there's an old paper street that ran through there that was just never built. At the end of the day, I'd have to check in with the Registry of Deeds or with DPW.
So in, in looking at the application, all that, that's, so I'm fine with the lot line. It's, it's going to define the building use and I'm, I'm, so relative to this. But I am, I'm just, it's bizarre to me that there would be a right-of-way because they have done, both of those buildings have been updated. I think they're being used as, yes.
It, it could be, there may be no street access from Fair Street for that other one. But it, it looks like there's other houses further down to the gate that anyway.
Well, if you drive by the property, I mean, it's just a driving, it's a driving space. And I, I've never seen, I'm, this probably is irrelevant to this, but I'm just kind of curious about why that is there. Because usually both, both of the two smaller buildings have street access regardless of whether they're parking or not. That's a different issue. And that could have been, oh, could that be possible? Let's say that in order to get the appropriate, because those are, I think that both of those buildings are being used for-
Yeah, I was going to say, it looks like it could be a shared driveway.
Are they, are they two-family, multifamily? What are they? The two, the two smaller buildings? What are they listed as?
Give me a second here.
So if they don't have any off street- So if they don't have any off-street parking, maybe they shared a driveway in order to be able to have it. In the back, there's plenty of room in the back, for sure.
Looks like it's listed as just single-family for the house in question. I'm not sure about the neighboring parcel, but I can look it up here.
Okay, anyway, just pre-existing non-conforming.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a great solution for this particular lot. I have absolutely no issues with it. Eric?
I'm fine with it.
You're fine? Jane?
I'm fine.
Somebody wanna make a motion, please?
Sure. I will make an emo- a motion, please, to accept application number ZB two oh two six dash zero one four, a variance requested from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-two of the zoning ordinance, to permit to adjust the boundary line between two lots containing one commercial building and one single-family home, resulting in lots that do not fully meet required setback, but the existing buildings more conforming overall. And also with everything as she has listed here in her applications can be applied.
As our criteria, to meet the criteria for the, yes, yes, yeah.
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? There being none, you have discussion, okay?
Hang on one second.
Okay, yep.
All in favor? Very good. Caitlin, you're all set? Sixty-one Leighton Avenue, please.
Are we skipping over Washington Street?
It, it, government. Hi. Please state your name.
Joanne Palowski. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Palowski, why don't you tell us what we can do for you?
Good evening. My name is Joanne Palowski and this is my husband, Ed. We purchased the property at sixty-one Leighton Ave. South in August of two thousand sixteen and in September two thousand twenty-two, it became our full-time primary residence. Leighton Ave. South is a private, single-lane, dead-end road. There are eleven houses on the street. We are the fifth house in. Lake Winnisquam abuts us all on the west, Swain State Forest on the east. The original house was built in nineteen oh five, but was extensively renovated in nineteen ninety-eight. We don't know when the garage was built, but we suspect it has been in existence for close to a hundred years. The current garage sits approximately twelve feet from the road. We would like to construct a new garage at that same twelve-foot setback location. The new garage, which will not have any living space above it, will replace a deteriorating structure and allow us to house a modern-day vehicle. The new garage will not negatively impact any sightlines or views for our neighbors. Since our property abuts Lake Winnisquam, we are very sensitive to protecting the shoreland and adhering to the state's stringent building requirements. With the required fifty feet, fifty-foot setback from the water and the forty-foot setback from the road, there is insufficient space to rebuild the garage. In addition, by keeping the garage and parking area in the same location as existing, we minimize any disturbance to the woodlands and vegetation on the property, which further serve to protect the shoreland. We are requesting relief from the forty-foot front setback requirement to construct a functional garage that will house our vehicles, provide for a safer means of egress from our home, and give us additional storage spaces, we do not have a basement, while at the same time continuing to protect Lake Winnisquam's critical shoreland. Thank you for your time in considering our request.
Thank you, Mrs. Palowski. Questions from the board?
What will be the new setback? Whereas before it was forty feet, what do you have between the road and the front edge of your proposed garage?
Twelve feet. We wanna, we would like to keep the same twelve feet.
I'm sure.
We have a septic system that's behind the garage, a field that we have to have that fifteen-foot setback and the fifty feet from the water and would like to connect a mudroom to the house so that we can have access to a garage.
Kinda squeezed in there, aren't you, between, you know, trying to abide by what you need for the lake frontage and?
Right, we have, in that area, we have a very small area and just hoping to be able to use our property to build a garage that, you know, we can put our vehicles in and have a safe means of, especially in the winter season, et cetera.
This, this doesn't quite do it. I, I understand why you would wanna.
That's the logic. You know, it has a dirt floor and there actually is a little bit, a few feet underneath and there are oil stains on that floor, so maybe it was a nineteen thirty or a nineteen twenties Model T that was in there at one point, but the picture kinda tries to depict that it's just a very quiet, you know, single-lane, private road that we have to maintain and, and the building, that foundation that's leaning, I don't know when that got added, I'm sure it wasn't in the early nineteen hundreds, but.
Thank you for the photos, they do help.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Not for me.
I'm gonna have you sit down for a minute while I let others from the public, if anyone from the public would like to comment on the request of sixty-one Leighton Avenue. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this meeting and now it is just for board discussion.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
My only question is this, so Leighton Ave. South was developed after North. North is all pre-existing non-conforming, proximity to the lake, proximity to the road, right around the board. When the south was built, all of the homes on the road have maintained that forty-foot setback, every single one of them. So from the junction of, of, what was that road, from Daisy, from the ju- junction of Daisy all the way to the end, every single one of those homes has maintained that setback. Although making a site visit, I mean, it's, the, the, the road just drops off.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know where else they could, what, what else they could do.
Well, oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that because, you know, you know, let's say that somebody on the property, again, nobody came to say anything as opposed to it, but if somebody else had come along and said, hey, we went before the board and, you know, and they told us, they were like, no, it's forty feet, forty foot only, you know, so, but again, I'm agreeing, it's, it drops down steep, it's, it's, it's a hazard, so, I mean, I don't like giving the first one away for free, not for free, but you know what I mean, but it, it does open the door for somebody else to do it and I'm not saying it's my thing, so.
But then again, you can look at each.
As it stands.
As it stands individually, what, you know, what works for some may not work for others.
It's a good-sized property to not have a garage, so I can understand, I can understand them wanting to have a garage and I think what they propose is really the least impact on that site you could really get away with, so I, I'm fine with it.
Well, you could put one downhill, it would sit on the slope, I'm saying, it would be quite a bit more expensive and they could do that, but then you get into that, you know, that fifty, the fifty-foot buffer from.
Right, then they have to go to the state.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think.
You don't want them to go to the state, or I wouldn't want them to have to go to the state for that.
The state has a really good process to go through to grant that, but I think that this is, this is reasonable and I'm unhappy with giving this away. I think that we'll probably have maybe other people will say, well, that's a good idea, I wanna do that too, but, okay, I'm okay.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve application ZB two zero two six dash oh one five. For a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five A, for the criteria listed in their application.
Thank you very much. Can I have a second, please? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor? There you go, Mrs. Palowski, you're all set to build a garage?
Thank you, if I could just clarify one thing, of the eleven houses, since we've been there, four have been totally torn down and rebuilt and they're all rebuilt with garages. There were two or three that had been done probably in the nineteen nineties, they all have garages, so, you know, I, I hear your concern about afraid, but I think there will probably be only a couple of houses left on the road that, you know, don't have a garage, so hopefully it won't become a, a snowballing issue for you, but we do appreciate it and.
We want you to have a garage.
Thank you. If you don't need them for your files or?
No.
No, we'll keep our copies of the files.
I didn't wanna just throw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, three seventy-one White Oaks Road will be continuance in November.
Can, can I just have you guys take a vote on that real quick?
Oh, we have to vote for continuance?
Yes, if we could just, somebody can make a motion to continue ZB two zero two six dash zero one six for three seventy-one White Oaks Road to the November seventeenth meeting at six thirty P.M.
Just a, I guess, a point of order, if we offered them this option at the beginning of the meeting and then we voted against it, I mean.
So what I wanted to do was to make that announcement in the motion, so that way it is, you know the date and time basically at that point to continue it, so that's the only reason why, but.
I would like to make a motion on application ZB two zero two six dash zero one six for continuance to our meeting November seventeenth at six thirty.
Perfect.
And how about their second one? We have to do that for their special exception?
You can include it in there too.
You can include it, okay.
To include ZB two oh two six dash zero one seven.
That's it? Takes care of that one. So the next one would be two thirty-eight White Oaks Road.
I'd like to respectfully, Director, I'd like to respectfully be recused in this portion of the evening, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We were advised that we have a short board this evening with only three members in this particular case. You may recall, I believe you, some of you sat on this case when it was here with twenty-four units and duplexes. It's been modified to try and address the concerns of the board and the public with single-family only and, and half the number with twelve units. But based on the, the three-person board, I can advise in good faith my clients to go forward as much as, we'll have to see what conflicts we have in November, but I'd ask that you continue it to the next meeting. I will say that I know some of the public have come out and I certainly respect people's rights to have opinions, good, bad, or otherwise, about projects. I'll hang around in the lobby if anyone wants to talk about the revised plans or plans for the project, so they have some preparation beforehand.
Thank you very much. So we will make a motion, or I'll make a motion to continue application ZB two oh two eight zero one eight, which is two thirty-eight White Oaks Road, to the November seventeenth meeting.
At six thirty.
At six thirty. So those in the audience that are here, we will address it November seventeenth at six thirty. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. How about all in favor?
It's fine, we announced it, it's okay. That's all I was concerned about is date and time.
It just seems weird to vote on that when they have their rights to do it.
And I bet that's why Gabe's here tonight.
Well, they came up and spoke and confirmed they were good with it, so.
Respectfully, I'm recused myself?
Perfect.
It's getting shorter and shorter.
It is, and I thought this was gonna be a long meeting, it's not. So one ninety-five Winter Street is up next.
One ninety-eight?
One, I had ninety-five, is it ninety-eight?
Agendas one ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight, sorry, Marcia.
It's been one ninety-eight for a very long time.
Well, thank you for correcting me. I know, one ninety-eight. Hi, with whom are we listening to?
Good evening, my name is Rod Cameron. I'm a cousin of the owner of the home. My mom was raised there and.
He was the submitter of the application.
My mom was raised there, my grandmother owned the home and my grandfather, and I was born in Laconia and I was, first couple of weeks I was living there as well, so it's a, but it's an odd-shaped lot, unfortunately. My uncle was living in the property next door and for some reason there's an odd jog in the property. I don't know what the history is related to that jog, but in addition to that, the town at one point came along and widened the street to put in a sidewalk and that, that changed the lot configuration also. My uncle, who lived down the hill, gave the town twenty, a twenty-foot piece of land to allow for access through there. My cousin, May, is seventy-six years old and the reason that she wants the carport is to keep the snow off the roof of her car. She has difficulty reaching up over the car to brush off the snow in the wintertime. That's the main reason for the carport, otherwise she wouldn't be bothered putting something like that up. There used to be a garage, it was at the back of the property and the back portion of that garage was actually on stilts. It was an odd situation, but it was removed some time ago. At this point, the main purpose of this, as I say, is to keep the snow off the roof of her car and that's about the extent of it. It is on the side of the house that is adjacent to a woodland belonging to the property owners next door, where my uncle used to be, they sold the property over and we've talked with those folks about putting this up and they don't seem to have a concern about that. The owner, I think, is a dispatcher at the police department in, at night. Across the street is a, a school. There's not going to be any issue with regard to that carport and interfering with school activity or traffic going up and down the road.
How about snow plowing by the city in the winter? Do they use that end of Winter Street and it's a snowfield with that?
They don't plow into her property.
Oh, they don't, okay.
No, no.
All right. And it's just gonna cover the existing driveway, correct? And when I look at the picture, I notice that the driveway's in the front and it's just gonna go right over that.
That's correct. Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Cameron? Mr. Bodie, you look intent. Do you have any questions for Mr. Cameron? None?
Yes.
No? Okay, Mr. Cameron, I'll have you sit for a minute and we'll see if the public has anything to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Wayne Swearengen. I actually own two fourteen Winter Street, which, other than the city, is the only property that's affected by it. I've talked with May and I have no issues with it at all. I know we've had extensive conversations about how property lines ended up with, with their family and everything, but, I mean, it's literally just a carport over that and I think she deserves it and have no issues with it, even having to go into my property a little bit on that side, so, okay, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Your name again was what?
Wayne Swearengen.
Wayne Swearengen.
Yep, S.W.E.A.R.I.N.G.I.N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Hearing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting. And thoughts?
I'm okay with it.
I have no issues.
Lot line is weird.
And it's little.
Carport's barely a permanent structure.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Tyler, Tyler, question? Maybe you could recommend to these two people to get together, because I actually think that the, the road is on Mr. Swearengen's property. It's, it's really weird what they have done here and actually if they clean up that little spot right there, I think it makes everything for the applicant gonna be a little bit easier. Anyway, you, anyway. If you guys wanna do something out there, I think, have the city be on their own property of yours. Be on their own, this is not.
Somebody make a motion, please.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve application number ZB two zero two six dash zero one nine, Article two thirty-five, Attachment three, for dimensional requirements and to specify what they have listed on their application.
Second, please. Thank you. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Done? Last one, thank you very much. Mr. Cameron, good luck.
Yep.
Please say hello to May. She and I graduated together. I am. Oh, get out of here. I know, know you're not. So we are looking at one twenty-seven Belvedere Street.
Good evening, thank you very much. Mark Kondodemitraki, licensed surveyor, resident of Laconia, representing Samantha Seacord, the property owner. And there's an old saying that what is old is new and that styles, as they go out of fashion, eventually come back into fashion. And I think that's something similar in this case. What the property owner is proposing is subdividing her existing current, you could technically call it a double lot in Lakeport, into two separate lots, adding a specific building lot, which is very much needed in the city. Just a brief background of the Lakeport neighborhood before I get into, you know, the variances required in order for them to subdivide. This neighborhood predates the city of Laconia and it goes all the way back to when this portion of the city was a part of the town of Guilford. And there are subdivisions in this neighborhood that date back to when, you know, this part of the city was Guilford. There are subdivisions that were done, you know, from the eighteen hundreds all the way up into the nineteen fifties where the lot sizes and the lot frontages were typically sixty feet by a hundred, you know, smaller, smaller typically building lots in that respect. This lot as it stands, and as I get into listing the variances and what we're asking for, road frontage is one of the important factors that we're asking for and this lot actually predates North Street. So one of the variances that we're going to be asking for, the road actually came after this lot. So the variances that we're asking for in order to be able to create the new lot and allow for the new structure are going to be multiple. One of the variances we're asking for is to create in the residential general zone, two new lots that will be less than ten thousand square feet. Essentially, the one lot will be eighty-two hundred square feet, the new lot, and then the lot with the existing home will be about eighty-one hundred and fifty square feet, approximately eighty-two hundred square feet. There are multiple lots in this neighborhood that are of the same size. Some are a little smaller, some are a little larger. So this clearly conforms to the history of the neighborhood, the use and a lot of the sizes of some of the existing lots and homes that are there. There is currently a single-family home on this property, on this lot. So we're also asking for relief from the side setback. The current side setback in this zone is ten feet and the home is only currently about two feet from the side setback, the side boundary line. Home, according to the assessing card, was, I believe, built approximately nineteen hundred. So it's, you know, aged, it's a very mature home. There will be no change to the home, the footprint that's existing, et cetera. It's just looking to be conveyed as a, as a separate lot. The other, the other relief we're looking for is green space. Currently in the residential general zone, you are required to have sixty percent of the lot set aside as green space. After the, after the subdivision, after the proposed subdivision, the lot with the existing home will be about forty-nine percent of coverage for the, for the green space. And we project that the new lot, once a home is built, will probably be somewhere in that same area, you know, forty-five to fifty percent of green space coverage, which again, it really follows with what the use is currently with many, many homes, you know, in that area, in that neighborhood. This is, this is a mature, you know, developed neighborhood. You know, a lot of the homes don't meet that sixty percent green space requirement currently. The other, the other relief we're asking for is on the new lot will be for parking. As you drive up and down the city lots and the city streets in Laconia and especially in this neighborhood, you will see that most of the driveways, most of the parking areas are well within the front setbacks of all of the areas and zones that they're in. Currently, a new lot, the parking space must meet the current front setback. You know, obviously in that neighborhood, none of the, none of the properties do. And actually, the way that North Street is situated, the right-of-way is not in the center line of the road. It's actually offset. So the right-of-way actually encroaches, if you're going north-south, so if you're heading north on North Street, the left side is the west side of the street. That right-of-way actually encroaches almost twenty feet beyond the edge of the pavement into the property. So if you drive up and down the street, the vast majority of people have their parking actually, you know, right on the property line. So this again is not outside of the norm of the neighborhood. It's well within the use of what's currently existing and it will not change or affect any aspect of what the neighborhood looks like. And then obviously we're asking for the frontage to be less than the required eighty feet. As I said, this lot on the North Street side predates the street. So the lot was there before the, before the street, North Street, was created. And the vast majority of the lots historically in that neighborhood, as they were subdivided and conveyed out, many, many, many of the lots were significantly less than the eighty feet. Now, over time, some of the lots have been merged and combined and then re-subdivided and changed. But this current width of the lot really does maintain what the use in the neighborhood is. There's still a significant amount of lots and properties that do not meet the eighty-foot setback, I'm sorry, the eighty-foot of frontage and are, still meet the, have the sixty-five feet of frontage. There's currently a pool on the lot that, that is to be subdivided and, you know, unfortunately with the configuration, a portion of that concrete deck would be encroaching into the fifteen-foot setback required in the back. So we're also asking for relief from that as well to create the new building lot. Happy to answer any questions or go over more history of the Guilford, Laconia?
No, I'm looking at your diagram and I can see where you want to divide and create two lots so that one is not going to be on Belvedere, one's going to be on North Street. And when I look at the Belvedere Street, you mentioned that, and I'm looking at the diagram of the house, that you said it was less than four feet on the side?
Correct. So if you are, if you're standing on Belvedere Street.
Right.
It would be the left side of the home. It's about two feet from the property line.
Two feet, from the property line. But we don't have to do it, that is the property, we don't have to make any judgment on that.
It's. Well, because this is going to be a new lot of record. It must meet the current zoning. So as a result of the subdivision.
So we have to do it for that.
We have to also address the lack of compliance with the current zoning for the existing structure. But again.
Gotcha.
Nothing is going to change on that use, right? There's not going to be any, there's not going to be any new encroachment into the setbacks or additions or changes or anything like that. Really, it just effectively codifies the existing use as in compliance with the current zoning.
Got it.
And you're including, the pool is going to remain on the proposed second property?
That's going to be TBD going forward as far as when the, when the new home is to be constructed as far as.
So at least on your drawing, there's a corner of the, of the construction that is back away from the rear, the rear setback.
Yeah, yeah. So there is a corner of the pool deck currently that is, would be encroaching in that new fifteen-foot setback. It, it's not determined whether the pool will remain or not and it is possible that the pool will be removed. But again, that is, that is to be determined. It is existing now and so we're asking for it to continue to exist until a later time.
So your intention is just to sell that lot and then whoever wants to build on it may or may not want the pool? And then you'll help design the house or?
No, no, no. So, so right now, there's, there's multiple intentions. One of them may be for the owner to build a home and live in it and potentially convey the other home. Or sell it or.
Got it.
Build one and.
I'm there.
Have the other and so.
Thanks.
You know, in the application, the configurations of where the setbacks were, were not really outlined in the application, but you've outlined them in your presentation.
Correct.
So in the motion or whatever, do we have to specify the, all those different setbacks that he's talking about and for each new lot or what? Because it's not, one of my first things when I read the application was I wasn't clear what you were going to do with each piece of property. And, you know, you've explained it now, but I don't know how clear that becomes in the approval process. Tyler, do you get where I'm going with it?
Yeah, so you're wanting to set the actual like limitations of how far within each. So that's where it's going to come down to, I think for the existing lot, that one's easy because you're not making any changes, just as the lot exists. With the new lot, however, that's where I think it's going to get tricky because if we, if the board grants you a variance saying, oh yes, you can have, you know, your setbacks up to.
So we're not asking for a variance for the new lot. The, the property owner fully intends to comply with the ten-foot setbacks for, for the new lot. And that's, you know, beneficial, I think, to them as well as the abutters to maintain that buffer in between properties. That way, if you want to, you know, landscape or put up some kind of a green, green buffer or something like that, then you still have the opportunity to do that. So the only setback variance we're currently asking for is for the existing home and for the pool. So, so the way the board has handled this in the past is to, you know, as Tyler said, to stipulate that the existing, I don't want to say violations, but I guess as they exist now, will continue to remain and exist and be in compliance with the zoning regulations.
Okay, but we've got one, two, three, actually four requests here and each one has to be handled individually. Yes?
No, you are approving one application.
One application, even though it's, the variance is asking for relief from four different.
Correct.
Okay, so, but now when you talk about one of the conditions is the minimum lot size, do we have to specify something in?
So they've already indicated on their plan what the minimum lot sizes are going, or what the lot sizes are going to be. If the board approves the plan as-is, that's what's going to move forward to planning board when they go to subdivide.
But the minimum road footage wasn't listed in, in the application, I don't believe.
But it's still listed on the plan.
Oh, it's listed on the plan.
Yeah, and it is, it is the last line on the, on the application. It says both lots will have minimum frontage of less than eighty feet and then the two new lot widths are specified.
Right, it said less than eighty feet. Okay, I was thinking eighty feet. So I'm just trying to, I don't have any issue with this. I'm just trying to think, but then again, I should be quiet because maybe my colleagues here do have issues, so I'll be quiet for a minute. And Rob's laughing at me.
I'm.
Jane, thoughts?
I'm clear on what's going on.
You are?
Yeah. I wasn't at first, but I am now.
Yeah. Richard?
Have we had the public comment?
Not yet. I just didn't know if you had any questions for Mr. Kondodemitraki before we go.
I have not asked any questions.
No questions of you. Okay, so I'm going to have you sit down for a minute, Mr. Kondodemitraki, and I will see if there is anybody in the public that would like to offer comment. Sir, would you like to come up and offer comment?
Yes, Barry Warren. I own one hundred North Street. I live there, which is the property that abuts the new lot that is being proposed here. I do appreciate the history lesson. However, this is two thousand and twenty-five and the city has developed its minimum lot requirements for a reason. And I think they should be taken, those reasons should be taken into consideration. My house lot is ten thousand square feet and has eighty feet of frontage. One fourteen North Street, the abutter on the other side is more than that. The house across the street on North Street, one oh three, is far more than eighty feet of frontage in front of it. So regardless of other houses somewhere else on North Street or on the old part of North Street that may have smaller lots, the part of North Street we live on does not. All of the house lots that are where we are have at least eighty feet of frontage. In the application, it was mentioned that there was a possibility, not only of a single-family home, but perhaps of a two-family or a multi-family home. I think if this lot does not meet the city's minimum requirements for a single-family home, it certainly shouldn't be considered for a multiple, multiple-family home or a So the lot size, I think, is a concern to me. And I would like to ask that you reject the proposal of splitting the lots into two. If you should agree that you are going to do that, what I would like to ask is that you limit it to a single-family home being constructed in the future and that you limit the size of the home that could be built on the lot. Another concern obviously would be parking with the size of the lot and a building on it. So I think that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warren. Appreciate it. Would you like to address that, Mark?
Sure, of course. And thank you very much for your comments and concerns. There is no mention in the application as to whether or not we're eventually be a single-family or a multi-family. It says that in that neighborhood, there is currently single and multi-family uses. You know, in a residential general zone, I believe you can have a single-family and an ADU. So, you know, if they had wanted to make it into the two units legally, they can. But, you know, that's something down the road and the home would have to comply with all of the regulations, both International Building Code, City Building Code, as well as whatever the other zoning requirements would be. So you, no one is asking for relief from any kind of building, you know, simply to be able to use the lot as the remaining properties in the neighborhood are using.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions of Mark? None? Okay, I will close the public portion of the meeting and we will have discussion likes the board.
I've got a handful of things.
Okay.
And Mr. Warren actually brought up two of them. Director, quick question. We have some density changes coming to, they're on their, working their way through.
There are no density changes for the zones themselves?
That was my, that was my question, number one. Okay. So the whole, the whole neighborhood is pre-existing non-conforming. And I'm generally in favor of this, by the way. I think that it is a reasonable use of the lot. However, Mr. Warren brought up a really, really good point that on North Street, this, on North and on the east side of Belvedere, this will by, by twenty feet be the narrow this will by, by twenty feet be the narrowest road frontage on the entire road. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there that he is absolutely correct on that. In this zone, multi-family is allowed?
By special except.
By special except, um, two-family?
Uh, by right.
By right, okay. So they reason, they would be able to, with, they would be, if we give them relief from the setbacks and the, and the setbacks, lot size and green space, if we give that to them, there could be a multi-family put there.
They would still have to seek a density variance.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, their density requirement would still have to meet, which, I don't think that they're gonna, yeah.
So we can stipulate that the, the setback relief only applies to the existing non-conformities.
Correct, correct. So basically for this new property then, the only relief they would have for setbacks would be that little portion that's sticking out for the in-ground pool.
Right, and so I think that I've, I'm looking at my, my map and the tax map is correct. I think that that could be physically removed. It's only a couple of feet there, so that would be, so that would be something that I would request. As another history lesson, so when that house was built, the person, or at least at the time of recording, somebody, a family lived there for fifty-seven years and then after that, another family lived there for forty-three years. And then since tw- twenty thirteen, there have been three owners. I think that's pretty freaking cool. So I'm generally in favor of this. I, I agree with Mr. Warren's concerns. And yet I do see that this is being a reasonable use. I think that twenty feet is not necessarily, I mean, you go for the rest of the neighborhood, Elm Street, North, Sheridan, they're all pre-existing non-conforming, that size and many of them even a little bit smaller. So I think that it is reasonable. Mr. Warren has some good things, so I would suggest that maybe Mr. Warren, Warren go back at the, if there is another variance, to be able to bring up some of his concerns. But I'm generally in favor.
Eric?
I agree.
Okay, so that means we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve variance application ZB two zero two six dash zero two zero. Article six, sections two thirty-five dash three two, two thirty-five dash three four, two thirty-five dash three five and two thirty-five dash three six for the criteria listed in the application with the stipulation that the setback relief only applies to the existing non-conformities and not to new construction.
I will second.
Discussion?
Nice motion.
There being none. All in favor? There you go, Mark. And with that, is there any other business to be brought before the zoning board tonight?
One thing.
Yes?
So I am. Am I the secretary? What am I? What's my job?
Ooh, is he the secretary?
Is that my, is that my job? Right. So in reading through the minutes, I'm not a nitpicker when it comes to like typos and stuff like that. I understand you're doing it on the fly and putting it all together, so that's fine. But I think that we, as a board, sticking to format because every single one of these bounces all over the place and Michael's terrible at this. He'll ask the public, he'll ask this guy, then I'll come back here, then I'll talk to you and it just goes all over. The more that we can stick to the form, us, them, us, you. And it's going to make it because I give you credit, Scott, because this is hard to read.
The, there is a recommendation from when I went through the training on how to write up the discussion that you write up, it, it, the heading is public discussion and then you put it there and then board discussion, et cetera, then the vote. So they have headings for each one of the portions.
You've gone back and forth a number of times in this meeting where you're talking to us, just the last person. You are, you know, the guy comes up, gives his thing and now you're asking him questions. Then you're talking to us, well, what do you think? And now blah, blah, blah. It just goes all over the place.
Well, do you have, when you, person applicant comes up, you as a board have an opportunity to ask questions of that person?
But you are asking questions of us and also of them. Good, I'm not, I'm not being critical of them.
Oh, is that isn't what you want? What, when I turned to you and said, do you have any questions of him?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Yeah, that's fair. That, that's fine. But what I'm saying is that we go back and forth out of talking to the applicant, then engaging with the public, then engaging with the board, then back. We go, we go back.
But that's what's expected. That is what is in the document as to how you conduct the meeting.
Okay, so all I'm saying, as best as we can follow that form, that's all I'm saying because it's really complicated.
You could thin it down for me if you would like. I mean.
No, I thought he was talking about the way the minutes are written up.
Yeah, because I have to chase conversations when I go back downstairs, so.
So when, just as an example, maybe I'm not communicating what I'm saying. So here, this guy is saying what it is that he wants to do. Now, we, we're trying to understand what it is.
Right.
Again, I did not, it was, again, I do this for a job, so to me this is ridiculously clear. But you guys are asking questions of him to clarify, but then in the midst of that, so now you're coming and talking to Jane and now you're talking to him. So you're, you're engaging in a conversation that has nothing to do with the applicant anymore. You are talking among staff. So now Scott is having to take notes here. You see what I'm saying? And I'm saying, I'm saying it's just as much as we can follow the form and keep it in its categories.
I mean, I think my discussion with her was when she goes, do you have any questions of him? And I said, no, not now, because I didn't understand before, but now I understand now.
I didn't know I had asked her any questions, but that's all right. I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
We need a format to follow.
Try to follow the form as best we could. We're normal people and it's fine.
Okay.
And we all communicate and understand things at different levels.
I have something as well. Do we not have any alternates for the zoning board?
No.
We do not.
How many openings are there for alternates?
Five.
Okay. I, I think we need to try to address that. I guess what I don't want to see is people using the short zoning board as a delay tactic in order to avoid public comment on their application. Just don't want to see that happen, so I think we need to.
Yeah.
I think it's been too many times that we've had a short board. Since I've been on the board, it's happened at least three times. I haven't been here long.
Going into board or meeting day, not knowing.
Yeah, I, I will say that has been.
You expect people to show up to be able to give their input and then we send them home and tell them to come back or the applicant is taking advice from their representation and they have to come back and. I just think it's, it's gotten to a point where it's a little much.
And I'm stepping out for some pretty important.
I believe people have come in recently to inquire as to openings on various land use, land use boards. So I know that there is interest, but as always, you know, there are a lot of openings. There's five alternates here. The planning board has two plus five alternates as well, so there, there's quite a bit of openings. So if you guys know people that are interested.
I have reached out to my condominium and nobody will take me up on it.
I've reached out to people.
But we continue to advertise. I know Nancy continues to put it in the Laconia links and everything.
Seven more years and I'm in that chair.
Here, our security member.
We haven't asked you for input.
I'll, I'll can it for later.
Yeah.
Just, just suggesting, we, we need to maybe think outside the box on that and get some more and get some more people in seats.
You know, and I've been thinking about Roland Mayu and Michael Foot. Like maybe when it's that Christmas luncheon, we somehow try to encourage them to join us.
And we honor them.
I mean, I could pick up Roland, I mean, because I don't think Roland's driving anymore. I mean, maybe encouraging them to come to that luncheon because it's wonderful.
Sure, sure.
I mean.
No, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, because we can't really do something special. That's too hard to organize, but maybe just inviting them to the Christmas luncheon thing.
Yeah, and I have a feeling we'll be discussing that this week.
Which is wonderful, by the way. Could you go last year?
I think so.
Yeah, heart's turkey, though. It was the first time I ever had, I never had their food before. It was delicious.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
We can make a motion. We can adjourn, adjourn at eight oh five.
I'll second.
Okay. We were adjourned.
He's in favor.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
It was not as late or as long as we had anticipated.